Hi, Jerry.
Neither. The bear, the real bear, not the movie. Oh, sorry. He's like that.
The bear what, Roger?
Sorry?
The bear what?
You're a bear, are you?
Yeah, are you?
So I believe.
Heritas.
That's the one.
Yeah. Who?
All right, here me on that, I'll put this away then.
Pardon, Roger, what did you say, can't hear you?
Seth is going to put that away, that would be better.
I know.
The only one thing that's good. Hi, everyone.
Hello. Roger, why have you got the pass?
Lovely, the ball of hand there.
You don't have the practice, that's everyone.
You've got to set your goal back. Well, you're short here, aren't we?
Yeah, we are.
Why is there no one joining us, is there?
Is that Brian? Can I ask the question?
I presume so, but perhaps it might not be, I don't know.
It's a pop in some bar. How do you go to disappear?
It doesn't need to itself, you can't eat it.
We're cancelled, let's not wire, I'll put the... sound back on.
My face up.
You don't need it in your own hands.
Ah, okay then.
Who is Brian?
I'm scared to breathe now. Have to copy.
Keith, can you hear us?
Hello.
Oh, you are there, lovely, thanks for that.
How is it five o'clock, shall we start?
Can we just, can I just put a quick tally sheet on here to just say who's busy?
There's a...
You'll have to do it, that's what I was thinking. I'll hand over to the chairman when he arrives. If he arrives.
That's why I was speaking.
Okay, so... many people missing, yeah, so there's Ed and John Ash and...
We're short of John Ash, Keith Cranny.
No, Keith's here.
Keith's there?
Is he ever coming here, Michael? You're not visible.
No, we can't see.
A lot of Long Rangers there. Roger, a Long Ranger.
Yeah, that's it. Like Robert. Can you see us all?
Ah, Andy.
Hi, Andy.
Over the meeting, so does everybody hear me? In charge of the back says yes, and I'm prepared to change places if someone can't.
Shall we start?
Yes, I think we, it's appropriate to start.
Right. Does everybody want me to read the emergency evacuation procedures or the filming and recording of the meeting? Do you want to take a break?
You could, you could just read the filming and recordings.
Filming and recording. In line with the local government obvious regulation, twenty fourteen, this meeting may be filmed or recorded by the town council or members of the public. Have we, any members of the public wanting to make submissions?
Tony's actually, Tony, oh. Tony's here now.
Oh, he's on the line. So, yeah.
Good evening, Charlie.
Good evening. Hello. Tony, you're in.
Well, I've done with the emergency evacuation procedure and the filming and recording meetings before you arrive, so if you'd like to start off with submissions from the public, we are then seamless.
Hello. Okay. Hello.
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 Hi, Tony, can you hear us?
Hello, anybody there?
Hello, Tony.
Tony.
Good evening. Good evening, all, hang on.
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Hi, hi Franklin.
Hello, Tony.
Hi, we've got a meeting on Friday, remember?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Love, sorry I'm not at the meeting tonight, but I got deleted in, uh, some other things, it was going on today, investments and whatever. Um, so, yeah. But I am here.
Right, Tony, Michael started, he read up the filming and recording meeting that we've just now got to the submissions for the public, so if you want to take over?
Okay, right, so do we have any submissions for the split?
No, doesn't look like it.
Is that a no?
No.
Okay, so, um, the next thing is to receive apologies for absence. Do we have any apologies?
I haven't received any.
Andy.
I'm not sure that everyone's here. Is everyone here?
Oh, John's not here.
No, yeah.
John Ash is not there, nor is Ed Rose.
No.
Keith's here.
Yeah, everybody else is correctly correct.
Fab, Fab is not there?
No, he is.
Fab is here.
I'm here.
Oh, big, but sorry Fab.
It's okay.
I couldn't see you on my, on my screen. Okay, cool. So, okay, we've had no apologies for absence to those who were in abstention. Um, we've got no, um, uh, Tom, is Tom there?
Yes, he's here in the meeting.
Oh, lovely, thank you, Tom, for coming. And so the next, the next item number three is applications for dispensation by councils. Does anybody have any other, um, dispensations?
No, nothing.
Um, I will have one which is, um, forty-four, which I'll email you anyway, Sharon.
Yeah, I think that's it. Uh, the next agenda item, which is declarations.
I beg of you quite right. Decorations by members under the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two. Do we have any decorations?
I need to make amendment on one of mine.
Okay.
Um, I have Avon and Somerset Constabulary supposed to be just a police and crime panel. So we can cancel the Avon and Somerset Constabulary.
Oh, that bit, just the police crime panel, okay, Jack?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that the Avon, is that not the Avon and Somerset scrutiny panel?
No, that's different.
Okay, fine, thank you. Brilliant, well done Franklin. Um, and my only other declaration is forty-four Honey Circle Coast, uh, family state. I'll email that to you, Sharon, too, you've got that. Put it on the next, um, paperwork.
Yeah, I don't need the number, but they, uh, wrote.
Okay, honey circle. Okay, so the next thing is announcements from the chair. Um, the only announcements I have is that we had, um, an excellent, uh, litter pick on Saturday, and there were four councillors that turned up, myself, Roger, John Ash and Michael, um, and one member of the public on the Saturday. And we took the bull by the horns by the initiative from Dell, our new deputy town clerk, and we, we did an excellent PR job in doing, um, a litter pick. And on the Sunday, we continued it, where, uh, sorry, I forgot, on the Saturday, there was also Nikki from the office, her daughter, my daughter, my granddaughter, and, um, that was more or less the contingent that happened on, on the Saturday. And on the Sunday, we continued the initiative, and, uh, there were two members of the public, which I've sent thanking cards to, together with their children, myself, Dell and her, uh, uh, young girl. Um, and I would just like, on a personal note, to say thank you for all of those that turned up and did a fabulous job and a PR job, um, for, for doing the litter pick on, on the Saturday and, and the guys that turned up on the Sunday. Um, that's really the only announcements I have from the chair. So let's, let's move on. Um, we need to confirm the minutes of meetings held on the twentieth of May, um, at the last, um, full, full town council meeting. Right, anyone wants to say something?
I was just going to propose the minutes.
All right. Um, can I just ask, uh, because one councillor said, Elaine, did you? It was the, um, they thought it was the, um, proposal for the press bike person? Did you suggest Franklin? Or was that related to something else?
Uh, I suggested Franklin to something, but I can't remember the name of it.
Okay.
I think that was the first one, yeah, Elaine suggested me, but I couldn't.
No, you couldn't do it, but, um, they just thought that you might, it should just go in there that you had suggested, so if you're happy to me to make that amendment by just putting in what you suggested, then?
Yeah, yeah. Definitely did that.
Right, okay, so, um...
Yeah, I think so, that's true, that was...
So can we have, if, on that amendment, can we have somebody to propose the minutes for the, um, meeting held on the twentieth of May, please?
Yeah.
I think Ben proposed, yeah.
Ben proposed, you have to say.
Second.
Right, so, so Ben proposed and, and you think second or Michael second?
I'm going, second.
Okay, Michael. Right, so that's really, I was going to add in here, can you just bear with me a second while I just write that, this in here?
Of course, so...
Losing people, losing people.
Okay, so I've just added in that councillor Elaine Hardwick suggested councillor Franklin Ousso-Antree, that he defines the position for them, for the fat fatty. That was proposed by Ben and seconded by Michael.
Hmm. And so those in favour, would you show the usual manner?
Josiah.
Brian?
Uh, yeah, I'm fine with that, okay, I've got a problem with my video, I'll stick it on in a minute, okay, thanks.
There's Roger.
Thank you, so...
There's Roger's got DTs. Josiah.
Right, Michael, as, I'm going to get Michael to find another vice chair, if that's all right? We've initially lost the very page and then it's, uh, I just had to fill in the order.
Thank you, Michael.
I used to charge for giving autographs, you really like that, don't you?
Yeah, if you could, if you finish, Richard, follow the very page. And you can finish as well after that.
Brilliant, Richard, don't worry about it.
And then signing the last page. Brilliant, thank you very much.
So, um, the next item of the agenda is to deal with matters arising from the minutes of the meeting held on the twentieth of May, not covered elsewhere on the agenda. Is there any other items? I think that's a no. So we'll move on to seven point one, uh, two thousand and eighteen strategic planning recommendations. Uh, next stage is skate park development including equipment, interior and containers, completions of landscaping, uh, project tools and equipment.
And that's just to tell you that that's still a work in progress, designs in hand for inside, hope to be okay, uh, for maximum by six thousand pounds, it's already been allocated by council, so great, he's working on that one.
Okay, so, um, seven point two one, recommendations for two thousand and nineteen, uh, thirty-six town council strategic planning meeting. A baseball activity centre repaid damaged grass strip ground in the preschool play area and artificial grass to allow outdoor play all year round.
You have the, in your, um, agenda pack, you have the updates from Dell, so you hand over to her to talk through her updates for the various things back?
Okay, um, I've got seven point two one, the Bayley Court Acting Centre will take damaged grass ground in preschool play area with artificial grass to allow outdoor play all year round. Uh, presently, the outdoor space is ideal for the small children, the grass has grown back, the area is being monitored regularly and grassy will be used as needed. The preschool has commented on how lovely it feels, um, to be able to use the area with the children recently. Trees could do with being cut back at some point, um, within the area, but this would just allow the area to dry out and reduce the flooding. Artificial grass coats will be obtained in preparation for the wetter months. Um, and it's just to recommend the continued monitoring of the situation within the preschool outside area.
Perfect, well done, well done Dell. Um, any comments on that? No? So can we move on to the, um, uh, the next one, seven point two two? Bayley Court Centre Play Area, or Centre Play Area, um, designing for new play area to replace existing.
Okay, following on from the last meeting, the council deferred the project until the, uh, year end figures became available.
Yeah.
Uh, the following was agreed at June finance committee meeting. The play area reserve, N C three zero one six, was increasing from a hundred and nine thousand to a hundred and sixty thousand in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, to allow seventy-five thousand pounds to be spent on the Bayley Court play area and then reserve is replenished over the remainder of the four years. As reported in the twentieth of March two thousand and nineteen thousand thirty report, the next project to be looked at will be Bayley Court play area. It was installed in nineteen ninety-six and it's done extremely well, but it's towards the end of its life. Quotations have been obtained, which range from seventy-five thousand, increasing up to just over ninety thousand pounds. The bulk of this is actually going to be the replacement of basic services and to include one inclusive pay, um, piece of pay equipment. Um, updates to be obtained on the health and safety aspect of the current play equipment. The last play inspection was carried out by the play inspection company in December two thousand and nineteen. This expects the inspection, it's considered that the play area is very low risk and the next annual inspection is due again in December twenty twenty. I'd, my recommendation or officer recommendation is consider replacing the Bayley Court play area. The funding is in the budget, but if not, look at waiting until the next play inspection report and consider to replace in twenty twenty-one.
Um, uh, thank, thank you Dell, that was a cracking report. Um, how, how does the rest of the councillors feel about that? Any comment?
Over that, if it's, if we, uh, if it needs to be done, I think it's best to get it done.
Well, after the next report in December twenty twenty, I will look at it then and, or I'll get on with it now.
Get on with it now.
Did we not agree to defer it though until?
No.
Well, no, you, what you agreed to defer it until was until the year end figures were available and we had the up to date health and safety, or, so you have both of those in your briefing note there, so...
Yeah, I think that we, we should just get on with it and get it done now.
If we've got the budget there, I think, I mean, it is well, well used, it is very old now. I, I tend to agree that it's, it's time to do the job, if we've got the money to do it.
Yeah.
Tony, Ben's waving his hand.
Sorry, can't see him at the back of the room. At night.
And I was going to say, I'm hoping, um, going to the mansion, twenty-four years old, so I think, why wait another part, not get on and do it? I used to leave that part, it's that old.
And I, I can remember picking Ben up from school in Appleby Ranks.
It is the one, it is the most youth actually, because it, I hope, it's the primary school, so it does get, obviously at the moment with the school being shut, but I mean, it is used a lot.
But also, what you said there, what is the logic of not doing, it's there.
Yeah.
What's the logic of not doing it, just to make sense, if the name, it is your question of which, which is the...
Can I ask about the quotations? We've got seventy-five thousand, thereabouts, up to ninety thousand. Um, that's presumably from different companies, it's a bit, so which is the one that we generally go there? What countries are they? We usually get a list of, uh, tenders or quotations.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're, I think what, what, as officers, what we were looking for was guidance from councils to whether you want us to carry on and pursue it now or wait till next year. We will obviously then come back with full singing, all dancing diagrams and that sort of things. But it was, it was before we got to that stage, it was for Dell to know which way you wanted to go now, so yeah.
Yeah, but we need to look at it, uh, the, uh, first.
I propose that we go ahead with it now.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree too.
Yeah, fair, fair point, Roger, um, what you said, that, um, you know, we, we, we need to move it forward because there's a possibility that these, uh, these apartments get very old and it may become unsafe, um...
Yeah.
Yeah. And, um, to continue and progress it, I think is a good idea. Well done, Brian.
Are we taking one by one now?
So I think Elaine proposed and I think Andy seconded the original proposal.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, so those in favour, like a show of hands?
Can you see our hands? Yeah.
Right, so that is unanimous on there, unanimous in the room, that's unanimous, thank you very much.
Well done, thank you.
We will then obviously get, well, Dell will speak to various contractors and we will come back with couple of plans and diagrams and then councils can make the decision on which one they like.
Okay. But we'll move on to seven point two three, initiation replacement missing bus shelter in Webbs Wood and refurbishment of the existing bus shelters.
So, okay.
Okay, um, I've got, managed to get quotation for replacement bus shelters. Uh, trying to source the exact same bus shelters has proven quite difficult, but not impossible to get something fairly similar. Below on the actual, um, report that I've done is the list of companies, um, contacted in the quotation to seek the consideration. Uh, we have quotation A, which is B C Shelters. The lead time on that is six to eight weeks and that one comes in at three thousand one hundred and thirty-eight pounds and that on top. Quotation B is Shelter Store, again, lead time six to eight weeks. Uh, this one comes in at two thousand one hundred pounds, Ben's in the back. Quotation C, there were no similar bus shelters to the ones that we've got currently installed, um, they're a lot more modern, uh, because this is a replacement, I just looked into getting something similar. Uh, quotation D, uh, the installation time is two days and lead time is four to five weeks and the cost of that one would be three thousand four hundred and forty pounds and then two eighty. As I've written in the report, will be described bus shelter similar to the existing one situated around town. However, quotation A's design is the most similar and will blend in with what, um, Bradys Oak Town Council already has. As lockdown gradually lifts over the next few weeks, um, it's expected the perfect company will open up to customers and the upcycling of one of our shelters, I hope, will begin. And officers will identify the worst looking shelters to try and restore.
Well, well, well done Dell. On, on that last, um, quote you were talking about, what's the lead time on that one?
Uh, lead time on that one is four to five weeks.
Yeah, which is a lot better than forty-eight weeks.
No, it's six to five weeks, it was. It's no eight weeks.
Four to eight weeks, sorry, I thought you said four, eight, eight. That looked great.
I would think, listen, Delbra, Ocean, that's...
Well, hang on just a little bit, I may, Roger, so I've looked at this and, uh, A is, um, the standard, the aluminium section is the weakest of the various, um, quotations, which means it is therefore more likely to suffer under eventual vandalism. Um, and for the sake of an extra thousand odd pounds, if that, that's three hundred pounds, sorry, I would go for quotation D, which has eighty millimetre by eighty millimetre, um, minimum, as opposed to item A, which has eighty by forty. They're quite similar, they're half the strength.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That makes sense, but, Michael?
Is it similar? Is, is, because A is actually similar to what we already have.
Yeah.
Either like, is it going to be totally different or?
Yeah, that's right.
Sorry, I know Elaine wanted to say something, but can I just reply to Andy? Quotation D, they all look very, very similar, um... Yeah, they're all very similar to the ones you have. Um, but A is just the most similar to the ones that you have existing.
Can I, can I just give you, um, a finance update? Um, so there is actually nothing in the new bus shelter budget, which is non-code nine zero two one, but there is twenty thousand pounds in the street furniture reserve, which is non-code three zero one nine. So the money is there to purchase new buses and shelters.
Yeah, I was, I was just going on the basis that A looks very similar to the one we've got there, but B is quite similar, D is quite similar as well. How do we go with that?
You don't necessarily want to have them all same, you can have a better quality one for much of the same money.
As last month.
Yeah. Okay, let's go with D then.
Yeah, well, well, well done, uh, for spotting that and, um, let's go with D.
Yeah.
I think, I think Elaine... Actually designed, the design mate, that's just the, that's just the, the way that's, the way that's, it's aluminium tubing, but the size of tubing, it's not like the thickness of the aluminium in itself or the compound, they usually, it's just the, it's just the size of it, that one can be, yeah...
I guess it's the, it's, it's linked to the roof construction, isn't it? Which I think is the bit that's most likely to get vandalised, where it's people climbing on top of it.
Yeah, but I personally want to draw back a link. I can remember the shelter, I know that's similar, Dell said that's similar. We don't obviously know that frame, shelter, or type. Because that one, the quotation A, yes, the, the way of the, like, the aluminium tubing could be, it's slightly a bit on one edge, so it's more of a rectangle, very square. But there could be more of it, as opposed to the quotation D, which might have less overall, um, material and aluminium tubing constructed in the, the, um, the, uh, bus shelter. It's hard to tell without it, or the diagram, the actual, we were buying for...
But quotation D glues sticking as well, so it's...
Yeah, but so did I.
Yeah, but so does I, we put, actually, too.
Oh, yes, it does, yeah, yeah, I'm a back end.
I, I don't think we should, uh, put too much emphasis on the new ones looking the same as the old ones. Because on that basis, everyone will drive a car that looks like a normal T four.
Yeah, but it's nice to have consistency.
Actually, as Dickie pointed out today, that, um, this is just the first of our very old bus shelters that is going to need to be replaced. So if we do change the design slightly, then going forward, when we replace the others, we can match them up to the new one we've put in rather than. Matching the other ones.
D is guaranteed for ten years as well, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, everyone does the same thing about.
But what if we then decided, so if, if you wanted to take the old that you installed proper new, then wouldn't it be better to give Del the freedom to go and put a whole range types of chances? With one, instead of trying to go for a similar roof design, a similar type of purchasing thing, you know, maybe it might be more.
Ben, Ben, with all due respect, i- i- it's a bus shelter, it's, it's not a, um, a huge, uh, um, effort task that we're building here. We're looking at a bus shelter and, um, I'm sure that if it's similar to what we've got. I, um, I don't think we've had the scenario where there's been a bus shelter's been destroyed because of thickness of the actual steel. Or aluminium or whatever it may be made of, um, and I think at this moment in time, we need to decide. Um, whether we need to replace this bus shelter or not.
I think Elaine, Elaine's got her hand up.
Elaine's asked, uh, is that?
Yeah, uh, I've been looking at quotation B. The reason why, it's got whole ton anti vandal, but it's an anti vandal buster, um, shelter. And that is the sort of thing that we need to go down the route of. As we know, bus shelters get vandalised. If this is offering anti vandal, octo's got seating, and it's only two thousand one hundred.
Much.
The others, where the others aren't anti vandal. Maybe slightly smaller by dimensions by the look of it, but personally, I would want to go for anti vandal because you don't want to keep. Replacing the glass or polyester or whatever it is, so I think quotation B would be more suitable.
Yeah, so fair shout with Elaine, um, but, um, I think in history, we haven't actually had any bus shelters run twice, or have we?
This, this one that, that it is going to put in is the one, this is the place, the one that was actually burnt down?
Yeah.
Right, in that case, maybe, maybe the best, if we, if the best shelter is, uh, vandal proof, in that case.
Sharon?
Yes.
Sharon, out of interest, if this was the one that was burnt down, were we, did we claim on insurance for this?
It was.
Was that pay for this?
No, it was many years ago, before my time, and I paid it ten and a half years, but it was a very long.
It's been that long?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, just a thought, you know, if it had been claimed on insurance, we could have gone for the other one.
We would definitely be in, yeah, we would, if it was now, we would definitely do that, but as I say now, this is a very long time ago.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Brian's got the hand up, has he done? Have you got your hand up as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, chair, chair, um, I think we're doing the meeting really well, I, I must admit. Um, I find it a little bit strange, the way the meeting is being conducted though, because. On South Gloucestershire, and I think Roger will, um, say this, what we do, um, is if we've got a small committee like this. We literally go round and ask everybody to speak, if they don't want to speak, then fine, um, and they make their point, and then a proposal is made and then we go through it. It seems to be a discussion which is sort of emanating directly from, um, the council chamber, um, and I do know that. Within South Gloucestershire and also even Firegate, which I'm on, we're not allowed to have meetings where you've got like. Hybrid meetings, you've got part Zoom and part others. Anyway, going back to the, um, to the situation, um. I think, uh, the suggestion made by Elaine is a, is a really good one, and the reality of the matter is, it's like half the price of the most expensive one. Which means you could literally put two, two in, you know, if we had to do, do another one, that'd be another saving, so. I've got no objection to it at all, I think this is a really good idea, and if that was a proposal, I'd like to second, um, Elaine's proposal.
Thank you, Brian, that's a, 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 a good thought, what, what have you just put through there? Um, so, can we possibly have a proposal to move this item on?
Yeah, I propose.
And I'll second it.
That's to purchase the cheapest one, give it a try.
Or put.
Quotation B.
Or put B as the best vandalism type shovel.
Not going to be simply minimum, it'll be ten years.
Well, B can, can pose that, the ten.
Yeah, I, I think so, you could.
But it did do, it did.
Can I, can I just ask, Del, did it, does it say, do you know with that quotation B, the length of guarantee? I haven't got it off the top of my head, it's something I can find out, they're all guaranteed at some level, but what level this one would be, I mean, if it's. Apparently it's anti vandal, it should have some fairly decent, um, guarantees against it, and also if we are insured, if anything were to happen to it, it could be replaced.
Yeah, it would be covered under our insurance.
Yeah, perfect. So we've, we had a proposal by Elaine, we seconded by Brian, so those in favour, like, just sort of show of hands?
That's for quotation B.
Quotation B.
Yeah, go, yeah, go with D, Brian.
One, two, three, four, five, six, so that's seven in favour.
Those against?
One, two, three, four. Again?
Extensions?
Keith, what are you doing?
O's in favour.
Right, sorry, I didn't see that, so that's eight in favour and. Sorry, and four against.
Four against, uh.
Five to three.
Yeah, okay.
We can't see you, Keith, that's probably the problem with your hand up.
Up again, Brian.
He's behind the corner screen.
Can't see you.
Sorry.
Right, so we move on and, um, the next one is the installation of solar panels and other energy, uh, producing, uh, products on. Braddisloe Town Council site. Now, I know this is an ongoing, uh, project, um, and, um, unless you want to say anything about it, Del. Um, um, I, uh, suggested I will assist you on progressing this a little bit further. Um, I, I was one of the instigators, or put the, about eight years ago, to suggest it was maybe an option. Um, for our sites, that we go a little bit more greener and look at solar panels. Um, and they got confused because they thought they were the type of vandalised, but, um, if, I, I, I haven't seen. One, uh, aspect ever to see that there's, uh, some footballer that has been kicked on a solar panel, has broken it. And with the new technologies today, they're not actually made of glass anymore, and it's more robust, uh, materials. And, um, this is one of the reasons why I was suggesting that we sort of look at this again. And, um, I know, uh, Del's been up triising all sorts of things, um, during this lockdown period. Um, and I suggest that I could help her in, um, obtaining, of course, quotes. Um, do you vote for it, Del? Elaine's got her finger up?
Yeah, um, I agree with Tony because I also, many years ago, suggested that we have solar panels. We've got to show, uh, councils that, and also the residents, that we are going green and will save a lot of money. By having our own, generating our own electricity, heating and all sorts, so I feel that we need to do now, if possible, or to later.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Let it done. We, we have to show that we are going green.
Sarah?
Hello, team. Share my, of the recommendations, continue doing this case, we straight through. Analysis, please, and because right now, after this outbreak, there'll be the institutions coming at the wires and right jumping at us, so. But I completely agree with the team.
What Tom says.
Tom's saying that he interviewed to the proposal that we carry on, well, not be a proposal, but would we carry on investigating this in more detail? But Keith has indeed got his hand up?
Yeah, I totally agree with you, Tony, and also the, uh, suggestion by Elaine that we should, uh, get on and do this, I mean, really. Get, get the gen up together, as much information as possible, value for money, and let's go with it, you know, I mean. You're right, they're made of far more robust materials nowadays.
Yeah, it's good, um, and, um, as I, as I said earlier, um, Del's been a bit inundated. Certainly within a new role and what she's actually doing around the, uh, town centre, and, um, I, I did, uh, suggest the other day that I, I'd, I'd assist her in the. How can I obtain any quotes? Um, I'm retired now, so I've got more time.
I understand, but.
So, okay, Brian?
Yeah, um, Tony, I think, I think you're taking on a really good, um, and useful task and, uh, coming forward to. To help the, um, the officers with this, I mean, it was over twelve, in fact, it was basically back in two thousand and seven. Um, when we were looking at this initially, and to be quite frank with you, the council were very short sighted. Um, there was many available from the government to, um, spend the time and actually have, um, people come in. To look exactly what was needed, so we could go out to consultations, and there's quite a lot of money available, and, and they didn't use it, and I, I could not believe. Uh, that we had so many people at that time on the council, uh, just couldn't see, you know, a bit of blue sky thinking, that this would be sensible. At the time also, we've had quite a big amount of money going back into the council from the power which we didn't use. And, and the damn things were free because the government was paying for it, for councils to put them in, to actually help. Um, sort of, um, basically advertise to local people, as Elaine so rightly said, that was happening, so. I think it's about time we got on with it, and I think, Tony, I think you're the right person to do this, so, um, I think that's a really good, uh, good suggestion.
I, I, so, too.
Sarah?
Sorry.
Sarah, I was going to say, I totally agree with Brian, I mean, at, at the time, we went for the new build. And by today's standards, this would have been one of the criteria of a new build, you know, I mean, we should be going, you know, full belt in this.
I agree, I, I, I agree with Keith and with Brian, we need to get it done there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Get the promotion to, to, to put, start getting it there.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Brian, thank you, Elaine, and thank you, Keith, uh, for your support on this. Um, we, we need to look at it and, and, um, not taking anything away from Del, because she's been going above and beyond her role, yeah, a- as. She has done to date, and, and I said, because of her, um, uh, commitments, what she's got, I would. So, suggest that I would give her a possible hand. I, I initiated some of this in the early days when we actually had a quote. A presentation, sorry, uh, by a, uh, a solar panel company, which, which I subsequently put thirty two panels on it, the sonnet called Impaltry. And they're benefiting from that ever since, and, uh, so we've got to look forward on this. There is a new government initiative where they are actually giving grants out to, uh, homeowners to improve their, uh, uh, greenness. And you never know, um, we may be able to even, um, uh, tap on some of that funds. Anyway, let's move on, um, so the next item on the agenda is to receive the minutes of the financial, uh, committee held on the seventeenth of June. Two thousand and twenty.
No, it's just received, then.
Yeah, so we've received, um, so all the, uh, we need a second or just to say that we've received.
No, you, no, you don't, you're just, you are literally just receiving them, so you're just adding them, reasonable for that.
In that case, just to move on, we'll, we'll, we'll receive planning environmental committee meeting as well, together with the, uh, minutes from the Youth and Measuring Committees Committee. So that's all the three, um, uh, subcommittees, that we've agreed all that, so, um, does anybody need to sign those?
No.
Okay, let's move on. Next one then is the updates from South Gloucestershire Council, all members, uh, relevant to, uh, Bradley Stowe. So I know Keith would probably like to say something, because I know he secured some funds to, uh, uh, resurface some of the roads in Bradley Stowe. Keith, you want to start this one?
Uh, sorry, Tony, you lost me there, go on.
Now, I, 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 from the press release, I saw that you have secured some funds to resurface some of the roads. Uh, in, in Bradley Stowe, and I, and I thought that was a, a, a cracking effort that you did on that, and, and, and I'd like you just to update us.
Yeah, there's, well, there's not much to add really, I mean, other than the fact that, uh, they are now going to carry on and get on with some of the roads that have been badly needed to it. We've got Winterborne Road being done as well, um, and Orpheus. You know, which is, uh, obviously used a great deal by people there, using the bus stops and things, it's all going to get done.
And, and the photograph you had did, you had did, you had done, sorry, that you put on the, the website, um, uh, and can you just elaborate where that is?
Uh, no, I haven't seen that photograph.
You're pointing at, you was point, you was leaning over Keith, pointing at it.
Was I?
You've been at the road.
And, and, and badly needed.
That must have been ranked in close, if I was looking at the road.
It was about somewhere down that.
That's like Brayden Avenue.
Yeah, it was ranked in close.
What, what, what about Brayden Avenue ranked in close? And fair play to you for securing that money from South Gloucester.
Yeah.
Which is going to help the estate, um, so is anybody other the, other South Gloucestershire county council members that are also on?
Yeah.
Bit down county, but say anything?
Yeah.
I think Roger has.
Can you hear?
Yeah. Go on, Roger.
Okay, we've been here, right? Okay, Bradley Stowe Scouts, they've put in a planning application for their storage container, to remain this place a third way.
Hey, can I have that off? It's so dark, I can't write all this down.
For a further two years, okay? However, South Gloucestershire Planning Officers turned around and said, no, it's, it's ill pit in, it doesn't, uh, it stands out. And therefore, we're only going to allow you one year. So Nick Nelson from a scout contacted me to see if I would support that, and being a former scout, Charlie, you know. Senior scout, perhaps I should be called senior scout emeritus, um, like, I happened, and I said, yes. Right, so I've been involved with the exchange of emails with a planning officer called Mykola Druazikin over several weeks. But South Gloucestershire aren't going to move on this, I've argued the case, and, uh, they're not going to move. Now, this has been further complicated by the actions of one female Braddisloe Town Council from Braddisloe North, I shouldn't mention her name. Who put this on the circularated schedule, presumably with the aim of defusing them even one year. Now, it's a great shame, the scouts get so little help on this council, they've got two hundred and fifty members, fifty potential leaders, and a full waiting list. Contrast this with the thousands of pounds we shell on the skate park for a relatively few number of years. The scouts prepare use for the future as a responsible members of society, not sure what the skate park does. But South Gloucestershire has said that they will support a permanent brick structure for this, for their storage. So I would support this and hope that this council will too. Now, I was going to ask Sharon, what we can, what can the scouts claim? Can we claim a larger grant for such a thing, yes?
Uh, no, but I mean, for, on our grant funding, there would.
Yeah.
I mean, they already get, they already get, um.
Well, I know, the only thing they actually get is reduce the fees on their, um, tenure that broke away. Now, we throw thousands of pounds of cricket, we throw thousands of pounds of football, we throw thousands of pounds of Braddisloe radio. We throw thousands of pounds at the skate park, the scouts get absolutely nothing, and yet they're the biggest, the, the, in this town, sorry? They're the biggest unit in this town by far.
People get a lot from that.
Sorry, what?
It's a loan through Bradley Stoke, I don't understand, Chair?
What?
Can I speak?
Yeah.
Right, okay, un- under the um, under the rules for planning, uh these units are able to have temporary permission for so many years. And the reason South Gloucestershire won't budge is not because they're being awkward about the scouts. They're actually trying to comply with the rules, and in fact, if Bradley Stoke want to um push some money in. And Roger wants to make a proposal to build a permanent storage unit there, I'm certain that um that could be planning permission. Given for a a permanent structure, but at the moment, the these units are pretty unsightly. Okay, it's a useful unit and people are using it, I think, um I'm not sure. I have a, actually, her agreement is that uh it's not used as much as it might be, or in fact, it's very blocked up with stuff.
It's.
There is, but there's no agreement, there's no agreement, but the real reality is, if if Bradley Stoke. If if the scouts want a permanent building, there's no reason why they can't come to us and ask us to help, as soon as that. These technical structures have got a shelf life as far as Brad, uh as South Gloucestershire.
We know that, yeah, yeah.
Uh Chair, um I think Ben's got his hand up, I don't know whether you can see him.
Ben, yeah, sure, go ahead, Ben.
Um I was gonna say some praise to what uh Brian said, actually, so, I mean, that, the the whole facility up there. Obviously, in the last few years, we've been trying to make improvements to it, et cetera, um a storage unit, regardless of who's a tenant in that building. Would be of added value to the council, and I mean, if you had the right size storage unit as well, might benefit from the grants itself. The storage area, and we know, obviously, there's plenty of um money in things like youth budgets that could be used to do. So do I have a type of activity, or we could look at other types of funding that are available across the council? Or in fact, the scouts can apply for grant funding and give it back to us essentially, because they have.
Because they could apply for one-off grant, there's none of our specific grants that fit within the criteria, but they could apply grant funding. I I guess if they then. But if they were, if they apply for like lottery funding and that sort of thing, which we could put money in as well towards it. Would, that would work.
But I think, I think it'd just be good, really, maybe at the next um for council meeting or planning meeting or wherever, or youth open meetings. It would have the scouts come in.
Well, the scout, the scouts have asked for a meeting with Del and myself to just look at what this was like. Before they knew about their planning, so obviously, they're looking up to the future, um but I think that, to be honest. Because it's gonna be a significant level of money, it would need to come back to full count, I think, not not only.
I just think in general, they give, say, for instance, if the planning officer in South Gloucester says they're reviewing it. I mean, a year is plenty of time for us to put some planning together in terms of a permanent structure. So maybe maybe if the scouts approach us appropriately, or even we just see it as an initiative that, as a council, we just want to invest in our buildings. Um that can be a useful activity for us to do, um I don't really see the ten, and the other reason the ten is using that storage space. Has been a, I don't, I don't think so, too, I wouldn't think that the scouts using storage would be the reason we should focus on storage or. And have them help with storage, I think it's just about what scouts will tend there, they need storage, and they kind of stepped in some way to kind of get that with it. The storage unit.
Uh, well, that's what they, that's what they want, they want a brick door unit, and South Gloucestershire says that they're look kindly for that. You know, like, so it's just a question of funding, I think, and that's the problem. But like I said, the scouts are. Every night gets married.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Roger, we could all ask yesterday's second question, Brian, um Andy put his hand up a little while ago, what would you like to say, Andy?
You're mute, Andy.
Yeah, unmute yourself.
If you're looking at a brick structure at the back of that, then surely in the long term, it might be worth looking at replacing all three of those storage units. And putting a brick structure in there, our council loan, our building's loan is coming to an end next year. If we needed to, we could fund it with an additional loan, but then put the council's maintenance facilities in-house in a brick building as well.
Makes sense, Brian?
Yeah, um I agree with what Andy said, and I also agree with what Ben said, because if you look back in history at that centre. There was always a problem with storage, you know, we had quite a few people actually using it at one point. And it was very, very difficult for them to actually store any of their, any of their items, so I really do believe that we should go back. And actually have a look at that space and put something decent in there, it's a good building, it's got lots of uh facilities there with big rooms. The problem is, it's not got decent storage space, and that is why the scouts have had to use that, but other users also use it. They haven't got enough storage space.
Yeah, but the scouts want it for their their own use, because they've got two hundred and fifty people going there, so they need to get their stuff back very quickly. For changes in activities.
Read that, that's what we need.
Yeah, it's it's the family, though, yeah, so, okay. It's a friendly debate, you know, I mean, that that should classify as part of youth, surely? Or should it not?
Well, I think that, I mean, that's, you know, you're, I I get, I have no idea on the the potential cost of a big. But I will think, probably.
Quite expensive.
What what top fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty thousand, I've got no idea yet, so.
Spend on building the office out there, because that would be an underletting, maybe like.
Yeah, perhaps it's a lot cheaper than that, then I've got no, I know.
I would have thought about, thought. It feels how big it needs to be, what?
Uh, well, we need, we don't need the, I think, I think Del had her hand up then.
Yeah, yeah, if, yeah, Del's speak for a second, please?
All right, um depending on the side of the development, I, from my previous role, um we just did a re-figure of a building. And added additional storage to one of our existing older buildings, and that was a massive development, but the actual additional side. Um was quoted at about between forty and sixty five thousand pounds, it's something that would be in a similar area to the three storage units. That we currently have at Brookway, so that's just something I I've given you some sort of costing on.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a lot, the scouts get no one a year, that sort of money.
But they might be able to get external grant funding if we put funding in as well, there's, there's, because a lot of, I know a lot of sort of like lottery. And that's some funding, they look for match funding, you keep them with match funding from somewhere else, they won't fund projects.
Yeah, yeah.
So there, there is a potential there for that.
Oh, we put them up, they're good, they're good, we we don't anywhere else.
Yeah, um and then I would suggest that we invite them to come to set up a full council.
Yeah.
With their ideas, and we can have done a bit more research within that time as well.
I'm not sure how I feel for what I think about making the scouts going at lottery funding in agreement of our building.
The reason I say that is because we, there's a lot of lottery funding and grants which we as a town council are applied for, but they can't. No, well, I don't know, he knows.
Well, they tried for three or four years, tried by the. They had their, they had their eye on that uh, that land opposite the Tesco garage, that that's earmarked for um future housing. So they're frustrated there, and they're frustrated by the council.
Thank you, Roger, if you perhaps just have Brian and then Elaine after that, because they've got their hands up a while.
Okay, okay, the scouts, they leased the building, okay, and it's all very well saying that, you know, there's lottery funding. For other organisations other than the council, but the reality of the matter is, it's council owned. And we can actually, you can actually sort of suddenly give um the uh scouts a piece of land to have a building on. You won't be able to do that, because the land itself is owned by South Gloucestershire, which is leased to Bradley Stoke. And therefore, you go round in a circle, if Bradley Stoke wants to uh be sensible about this. We have got a building which does not actually serve its um people well, that are actually renting it. Because there's not enough space there, however, the scouts decided a long time ago, when they came to the building initially, that they had storage elsewhere. And they used the building, rented it, and then they decided they wanted to abandon the storage they had, and then they applied to Bradley Stoke. To have some temporary storage there, if Bradley Stoke wishes to increase the size of the storage areas they've got. To facilitate people, then there's no reason at all why they shouldn't actually do that, we have got, we do raise rates. Roger uh was quite sensible in what he said, in reality, you know, they are youth as such, they are a different branch of the youth. The scouts actually raise a lot of money themselves, but the fact is, they rent it, we pay them the rental money as a grant, and then that comes back into the council. But in reality, we do do what we can, but we need to stand up and be counted, and the buck stops here. And we should be getting some extra storage, which is sensible, think, such storage which is going to be able to be used. Which is properly lighted, is fit for purpose, it's not damp, et cetera.
Well, well, well said, Brian, let's move on to Elaine.
I agree with Brian, um I think that it should be. Uh in the council's possession and not the scouts, if the scouts get that built, they own it. Even those on South Gloucester land, they'll own it, so I think that if, like what Andy said. If the pay for the town council building comes to an end next year, if we can afford it, why don't we do it? We build that storage, and then we can say it belongs to the town council and not to the scouts.
Uh Michael's got his hand up.
Yes, I think it might be useful to know, Chairman, what other property we actually are responsible for, either owned or leased from South Gloucester. And what uses is being put to, because it may be, I don't know, it may be, that there are other properties that we can get our hands on. That will be suitable for the scouts to use without causing any real um inconvenience for the present public.
Now, uh all our sites that we have, so here, Baynes Court, and Book by Activity Centre, they're all short on storage space. Um and there is nowhere else that the scouts could go to meet and have storage space, because just of how it works, that's the, yeah, so.
Yeah, that's my, yes, that's not an option, um so um is is there any proposal to move this thing forward?
Well, no, you you can't have a proposal, it's not on the agenda, so we will just, we're gonna all meet with with the scouts. And invite them to set up a full council, if that's.
Yeah.
The scouts can point.
Yeah. They can put forward what they want to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, but can I get another point? Tony, can I get another point as well? Different one, different one this time, right? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, we're all in.
Is it about the Werdies? Do you know where the Werdies is? If you don't know where the Werdies is. If you went down here to Rabbit Roundabout in the straight line, it's the last road on the right. Okay, I was approached by Mrs. Austin Young, asking my, to my support in getting traffic lights installed. At that junction of the Werdies and Bradley Stoke Way, apparently, it's very, very difficult for people exiting the Werdies. Into Bradley Stoke Way because of increased traffic and increased the traffic speeds. Uh she asked that, she liked the traffic lights put there, okay, I've been to uh. I've been to the road traffic engineers and requested that this is put on the local transport priority list. But I got an email from Andrea Benomi, an engineer.
Yeah.
Thinking that this is likely to cost between two hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand pounds, it's not, it's not a small job. It's a very, very complex thing, it's a set of traffic lights, so it's gonna, it's gonna take its chances with other, you know, proposals as well. So I'm not that hopeful, however, she's gone round the Werdies and she's got a petition of sixty three people. Which is quite a lot for a smallish road like that, um so it'll have to stay on the priority list. And uh and be considered uh whenever, whenever they get around to it.
I think one of the problems with the Werdies might well be right turning traffic coming out of it and trying to go across the alley. Yeah, the. I wonder whether another option might be to make a pretty little central reservation in, and make turning out of the Werdies net turn only. So people will have to go up to the roundabout and all the way back, but it's only a hundred yards.
There's a pro, there's a slight problem from Rabbit Roundabout, where you can't actually see traffic coming in.
Yes.
And it's me who's going, wait, not. They they would clearly get out, but we put it here.
Thanks, thank you, Michael, and uh thank you, Roger, on that.
Yeah, so anyway, that's the, that's the, you know, after the traffic engineer, et cetera.
Elaine, you got her hand up.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, uh I agree with Michael, um that they should have a no right turn. This with this similar situation with the Bluebells uh rest, around the corner. Where they was having problems coming out of uh there, and we made it, that there was no right turn. They had to go left and then round around back back up, but doing a no right turn would be more sensible and it'd be cheaper.
Yeah, much cheaper.
And also, traffic lights, actually, we would have any type of, of any way, I think, there. We need, so I just think, yeah, two hundred pounds is just.
Just really. It's huge, and everybody, yeah.
Just the state is having a, you know, no light turns, and you go to the.
Yeah.
But she, but she did ask the words of course, or talk about, you know, I just asked the question, I'll ask the question. Yeah, that's an actual topic problem would be there, become the topic line as well, eventually would be having a problem, because.
What was that, Derek?
The question, you can't really have that much, really, it shouldn't be that, it should be, can we resolve the situation?
Yeah.
It would be, it would be crazy, I think, to install traffic lights on the Werdies, because if you did it on Werdies, that every single road.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It won't.
Right, then.
It's an, and then, an economical um.
It is. It's difficult to go out of that, though.
And 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 at the moment, in fairness, because of the um excess traffic that's going through our estate. Uh due to the uh lockdown of the um Patchway Gypsy Patch Stade Bridge. And we 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 need unfortunately to suffer this situation in which we've got the moment, but that will ease up. As and when the new bridge is installed, although we know it's all behind schedule, but it will eventually get installed. And um things like this will ease up a little bit, so they won't have such a situation that got problems of getting out on onto the main road.
I think that.
Yeah, Andy's got his mind up there as well.
Yeah, Andy.
Did, if I remember rightly, are traffic lights gonna be installed anyway at all four junctions going on to Rabbit Roundabout? The Great State Roundabout, so literally, about a hundred.
Yeah, it's very, yeah, yeah.
Alright, let's there.
Yeah.
Could stop the traffic, and stop the traffic when the lights change, still allow them out anyway?
Yeah.
Well, that actually.
When the lights change from a little, from a Stoke given bypass, it'd be letting traffic in from uh, from the V one. Four one seven four, wouldn't it?
Yeah, you.
Yeah, there's always gonna be a.
There's always gonna be.
A delay, I would guess.
Yeah, there's gonna be a little delay, and it takes ten seconds, yeah, if you pass to them.
Chair.
I think Ben's put his hand up as well.
Sorry?
Keith and Ben have both got their hands up.
Okay, Keith, could I speak first, please?
Yeah, I I think the other issue you've got to think of is that obviously the Bradley Stoke Way. And being that it's on the Metro Bus route, going through to the bypass, um you 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 know, they don't want too many traffic lights. Because it holds up buses, and and if you're gonna have a light controlled roundabout junction there. Um I I think really, you're right, you know, no right turn solves the issue. Okay, it means that the people coming out have got to go down the roundabout and turn right, um but yeah, as you say, um. Uh Tony, you you know, the gypsy patch issue will resolve itself, uh the bridge is now destined to be moved about November. Um obviously, there will be ongoing works on Gypsy Patch, but eventually, it'll all sort itself out.
Yeah, you you're fair play, shout, pull that piece. Yeah, you, you're fair play, shout, uh, pull that piece, you're absolutely right. And any other, any other questions?
Andy's got his hand up.
Okay.
I was just gonna pick up on a point that Andy made, that the light control doesn't come out in the roundabout, but it is light control for pedestrians and cyclists, not it's not controlling the traffic lights, it's controlling the crossing for rain.
Yeah.
Do you can possibly that?
A resident in the Werdies would have to nip down to the traffic light.
They might have a few seconds before they, before they get steamrolled.
It's hard to get out. Anyway, let's, let's move on, because we could talk about this junction all the time, um. Uh, so, uh, let's.
Can I have your own?
No, you can, isn't it?
Sorry?
She read out what you bring, didn't you, so?
Yeah, well, most of it, yeah.
If you could pass it on through to Sharon, she could add it to the minute, please, uh. Okay, can you, Roger? Um. So the next matter is, um, financial matters, approve of the bill.
Frank, then, has he got anything to say?
I guess not, I guess.
No, okay, well.
Yeah, no, no other comments from any of the South Gloucestershire county councillors?
I was just going to talk about this, um, Oldbury Power Station giving out grants to support uh, overcome COVID nineteen in our area, and we've made few contact to allocate if there is any food banks within Bradley Stoke Patchways to give order, potent. In so far, within Bradley Stoke North, I identified Ambalie Road Church, I think they have this food cafe. I'm not sure that any of, uh, councillors here know any food bank within our area that they can tap into this funding.
There's the, I think, because John asked, John Ash asked me about this, I think, and I did say that they're the North Bristol Food Bank, which covers, well, it covers, there's, uh, um, I think it's in various churches in the area. And there is one in, in, um, Bradley Stoke, I think, isn't there?
There, there's also community fridges.
Oh, okay.
That's the U M P O, didn't it?
Ambalie Road, yeah, Ambalie, Ambalie Road.
Also, um, St Chad's Church in Patchway have a food bank.
Yeah, but I think that one's part of the North Bristol Food Bank group as well. Yeah, that's what this is, the North Bristol Food Bank is connected to the public trust.
Okay. Uh, uh, thank you, Elaine, for that, and, um, Andy, could you possibly just send those details through to Frank, then? So he's, he's got those details? If that's possible, please.
Sharon, do you have any of these, these food banks that I can have?
Um, all I, I went on the, um, on Google and Googled, um, food banks in Bradley Stoke, and this North Bristol Food Bank Trust came up with a list of churches and everything who are involved in it, so they are in this sort of surrounding area, but I can send you the link tomorrow definitely, yeah.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, so we've had all the updates from the South Gloucestershire County Awards, County Awards. So the next one is the financial matters to approve the bills and direct debits for payment.
You have that in your agenda, Pat, councillor?
I guess you've all read those, so there's, um, if anybody.
I, I propose it, I propose. Books item.
We had a class, uh, long time ago, I'm, uh, it said, this is Steve Lloyd Room, what's that?
That's when they cancelled, um, that's cancelled, they've already paid for the other ones, there's been a few of them. They haven't passed me on yet, no, not much of the main, but they're open to do.
Okay.
So I think, did Elaine propose?
I think so, so we have, um, everyone in favour, put your hands, please. Okay.
Unanimous, thank you very much.
Okay. So let's move on to the next one, which is item thirteen, to deal with the miscellaneous, miscellaneous matters. Thirteen point one, quotes for repairs of roof structure at Bailey's Court Activity Centre. Any comments? No.
Shall I?
If I just read out the report quickly, um, Bailey's Court Centre struggled with a leaking roof for quite some time. As part of the ongoing maintenance programme, it needs to be fixed. Every time the hilly down door, the orchard roof becomes waterlogged, we usually must move to another room. We've been lucky so far, um, that an empty roof has been available, but looking forward, we need to look after the asset and ensure the ceiling is repented. There's old watermarks, um, on, on the ceiling that have become brown. Um, and we need to meet with the technical flooring which was fitted two years ago. The roof value section directly above the orchard roof, has been badly damaged several times. It's suggested that we either re-roof the whole area to rid the lining of the valley, or to repair the existing roof roof. Um, we felt that many areas were felt leaking and replaced with tiles repairing any cement work in the valley. As existing tiles are no longer in production, one suggestion is to use something similar. One contractor has suggested buying bulk, a bulk order of the tiles, which is suitable, and have these leftover tiles to use as and when they become broken, which they do each year with a critical vandalism. Um, below in the chart on the report are the three quotes with specifications, those works will be carried out by the different contractors. Have you got a copy in front of you?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I mean, the, the first contractor does specify the whole area would be re, re, um, or completely repaired. The second one would be, um, just to patch up the area in depth, and the other one would be, again, just a patch up job. Uh, my recommendation would be to go with the second quotation, because when we came to spec the roof, we actually repaired something with a temporary measure.
So we're, we're looking at the difference between doing a whole roof for four thousand two hundred and forty-four pounds, plus that, or a second option, which, um, Dell recommended, which was to, uh, uh, fix the roof issues at this centre, um, and have, um, other tiles left over of fourteen hundred plus the eighty, and the third option was to, um, just do a patch up job for seven hundred quid, plus the eighty. Um, huge difference in prices, um, however, we need to decide on possibly which, which avenue we wanna take on. Whether we do a, a little patch up for seven hundred quid, a more, a better patch up, which was Dell's recommendation for fourteen hundred, or go for the full hold and spend four thousand one hundred and forty-four.
We do have the, um, Bailey's Court Repair and Maintenance Budget, which is nominal code eight zero four one. We currently have twenty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty pounds in it, that's for the year.
So, or, 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 fair play, Sharon, although we've got the money in the budget, uh, and, and we were saying earlier, um, the, because we're not sure of what's going on with the, uh, uh, situation of the pandemic, of how many people might be getting, um, fully. We still need to look very carefully at what, 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 what we're going to do.
I'm just telling you, um, informing councils and the fact that there is a budget available for whatever you might decide to do.
Yeah, but we've got the kitchens at Rockway, I mean, others that, that's part of that, isn't it?
No, the, if you remember, it was the kitchen here, two kitchens here, and we preferred that till next financial year. So this is, this is actually just for Bailey's Court Repair and Maintenance Budget, yes.
Yes, so they do.
Yeah. But that's the last of the year, and there's quite a lot of stuff that comes out of that. I think we've looked, we've spent all of quite a glass, yeah, I think. Spent back twenty-one last year, yeah, so.
But I think, um, we're, we're, we're making the progress.
I put this in the budget, to do whichever op, um, you, you, you do.
No, Tony, it's difficult, you're breaking up a bit.
Can you speak up a bit, um?
I think Elaine got her hand up, and Andy, I think.
Yeah, um, I think that we should, um, just re, re-roof the whole area. What's the part, doing patch ups when you might end up having to do a bit more? You're only doing part of the job, I think it's better if we just do the whole lot in one go, than have to keep revisiting it all the time.
Okay, Elaine, as, as long as you've got some sort of guarantee, so I think that's an idea. And, and who else like to say something?
Andy has got his hand up, Andy.
Say exactly the same as I, we've just re-roofed a house that we've got in Bristol, and to be honest, the house roof has got twenty-five years on it, it's one of our biggest assets. Once you start having to pack small areas, then you find another area and another area. If you're gonna do it, I totally agree with Elaine, that that's a proposal, Elaine, I second that, that we, we go for re-roofing at four two four four plus that and do the job properly.
Yeah, I, I propose that we do, um.
Any, any other comments before we make?
Keith, Keith's got his hand up, Terry's got her hand up, Karen Dell's got her hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, uh, with regards to this, I, I, I looked at it and I thought, well, if we're gonna do the roof, let's do it in one go, get it done, and then we, it's, it's an asset, it brings in lots of, uh, revenue to this council, you know, go for it. I mean, we could go for that second option, but I think you're only buying time. You, you know, maybe a cricket ball here and there, or something else that happened, uh, you know, we have a lot of unfortunately, bad weather in this country, and we cannot afford to have an asset like that with rooms being put out of use and repairs, I mean, to be done to florings and, you know, all the decoration every time. Just, let's just go for it, get the roof done properly.
Hello, Terry, Terry's got her hand up in the room, as has Ben.
Terry, Chris?
Um, actually, Chair, I just wanted to suggest, would it work, um, if we were to consider the whole roof, but also considering circular panels or even, um, certain low-enamelled tiles as well, so that it can start healing itself? We could be doing the roof, huh, anyway? It might be worth considering doing that at the same time.
Yeah.
Well, well done, Terry. I think, um, before we move on to the next one, if, if Dell would like to just come in for a minute?
Can I just clarify, this isn't the whole roof at Bailey's Court, this is just a section, I'll just clarify what you're saying, the roof.
I, I know you said a, a section, but it wasn't, I'd say the whole roof. Yeah, the bigger area of it, so.
It's, it's the original building, isn't it, the old building? So it's, it's the tiles on the roof of the, the original old building before it was extended, I think. We understand that, so it's, it's the, the pitch roof. Yeah.
And Ben's, Ben's got his hand up in the room?
Sorry, Ben?
And if, if we go to, um, if we go down the option of picking or selecting the tallest old egg, then the other two quotes on this, on this are called the patching that you think fits in a smaller egg. So shouldn't we be able to have, like, like quotes for that larger job, and sort of actually compare anything to it?
Yeah.
And if it is a more, well, I don't, I get what I'm saying about our roof, but is it literally the old, the old part of roof now?
It's a part of that section, it's not the whole of the old building, it is a section that is over the orchard room. So it is a section area, yeah, it's not the whole of the old building, so.
So to my mind, then, I would prefer to have quotes based on repairing that whole section, and then quotes preparing the, uh, redoing the whole of the old section roof, taking the whole thing off and doing that. Uh, because I think that's what we're alluding to in comments, of just do the whole thing, and stop the patchwork, or do a wider patch, which is over the top of this. That's that, I would propose that we do that, have a section six quote, because you'd be wanting a quote for a larger patch, and then a series of quotes for the whole roof to be done.
I'd be very happy to second that, Chair. I'm not sure we actually need to go with the smaller than that option. I think we should go for the whole roof, because it's, uh, an investment which we should carry, it's not over a number of years.
I think we could include the soda as well, because at least they see what we've impacted costs on.
A big problem.
Could, could, could I actually make a suggestion, then, that this, this leak does need something doing now. So, and I think to go out and get six quotes and then to investigate soda panels, I mean, that isn't gonna happen next week, so, because I suggest the councillors that they consider taking the lodge construction, quote, seven hundred pounds, we know that our lodge has worked with us for many, many years, just as an interim, because, and they, look, because, yeah.
I think we should, I'm sure, soda panels are quick to fall as well.
I'm gonna stop talking.
And sorry, yeah, can, can, um, so I think, I think the proposal possibly may be that, um, we look at a quick repair of the seven hundred quid, and then we investigate things a little bit further to do
Yeah.
um, a, a more bigger scale job on this particular roof. It sounds as if you want to propose one.
I think Ben is still waving his hand at the back of the other.
My question is for that. So the, when the, um, the, the, the company came giving second quoting, put in that temporary, um, repair. That type of repair doesn't go the length of what you needed to go to at the moment, so you can't, like, live on that temporary repair until we get everything sorted?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't quite hear that, Ben, sorry.
Ben's, but, um, um, Ben said, so you put in your report that Nathan Fordham, um, and recently fixed another roof issue at the centre, so he made a temporary repair, so that, he didn't make a temporary repair to this issue. He made a temporary repair to another thing. So he, it was this repair, when he was actually up there, he did a punty repair for the interim, but then we had quite a substantial rainfall and, uh, obviously that repair. Yeah, so, yeah, so that, no.
So, well, we're thinking of.
Oh, yes, because he did, he did that through charge while he was up there quoting for this, I think, so it was pretty, which lasted a while, but then we badgered him, so then it's now.
I still think, I still think it don't really match with the time being, should be the way ahead and, uh, investigate, so, so, so.
Fair play, Roger. Let, 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 can we have a proposal, perhaps that we can do a quick fix just to sort out a possible leak that we've got currently, and in the interim period, we look at a more substantial repair to the roof?
Yeah, I'll second Roger on that.
Okay, so, so, but proposal by Roger. Can you make, uh, 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 hands for, uh, acceptance of that proposal?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you go ahead, Karen?
Right, so Keith and Andy, Elaine, four, that, I, six, seven, eight, nine.
And, um.
I'd say nine in favour, I think.
Those against? There's the extensions? One extension, maybe.
Right, Ben, what were you, were you doing?
The extension.
Are you muted?
Sorry, I voted for.
You voted for, okay, that. So ten in favour of that?
One, one in, one against? Sorry, uh, no against, I'm one, one in extension.
Right, but that doesn't actually add up.
Brian actually is buying it all.
Yeah, I know Brian's not in it, yeah.
What about you, Brian?
Number seven, then?
Nine, ten, is eleven, oh no, that's like ten, eleven, yeah, that's it. So ten in favour, thank you. One extension.
I'm gonna, if, I can invest in another guest before you show up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All help gratefully received.
Okay, let's move on to, and that is, uh, this is, if I can recognise what it might be, is, um, so, uh, where are we? At the end of the South Gloucester, put, put the bills. At least the same as your, put, put the bills, um, repair. So now the, uh, proposed the amendment to the standing order forty-two to about eight members on each committee, rather than seven, as currently allowed. Do you think that this, uh, motion?
Yeah, um, due to, like, last year when that proposal went through regarding proportionate. Um, I would like it to allow of, of other parties and independents to be able to represent the residents. Tip for them, I would like to see the committee appointments returned to the previous system. I.e. so that at the ATM, anybody can say, who wants to go on, either planning or finance or youth and leisure. We are not a political party, there's.
Will you vote?
It's not political. Town is not political. Um, also that there is no other South Gloss, town or parish doing the same thing. With all voted on by the residents to represent them on each of the committees.
Um, right, anybody like to, um, say anything on this matter?
Yeah, it isn't true that, uh, other, uh, councils aren't doing that. Other councils are very much doing that.
Yes, they are, they are, Terry, but not within South Gloss.
That's not true.
Or where are they? The list that I've got, they're not.
South Gloucestershire, which is in South Gloucestershire.
Yeah.
South Gloucestershire is a itinerary. It's for DCs. It's not for town and parish.
Elaine's actually referring, she, she's referring to town and parish councils within South Gloucestershire. I'm assuming like Yate, Brombury, Patchway, Bilter, Frampton, Cottrell. So she doesn't, she's not talking about the unitary or quality, she's South Gloucestershire council. She's talking about the next level down. Um, well, I haven't checked that, but, um.
I've already done it, there isn't.
Uh, I can't think why we should change it now, having just amended the standing order forty-two. Uh, I think most of us are quite happy with that.
It's undemocratic.
It is very much democratic.
It is undemocratic. We're not, town and parish is not supposed to be political.
I think there are two or three points, uh, by May, Chairman. I mean, first of all, every councillor is entitled to attend every meeting, although not necessarily to vote on it. So that, there is a representation. Secondly, it's not up to any councillor who wishes to, to raise points on a committee meeting when it's brought to full council. So, um, there's representation that way. And the fact that even if it is accurate, that there are no other, uh, local councils that take this step. Perhaps they are behind the drag curve, but we are actually forwarding the way ahead.
And democratically decided the process that we wanted to follow. That was democratically decided.
Actually, it used to have the same system, but then they scrapped it.
I don't know, yeah. So I propose. I propose we leave it as it is.
Well, you can't, yeah, so this is a proposed amendment to standing order. So this then, obviously, no decision is made on that now. We need a proposal and a seconder for the proposal, which is to ask for all committees to return to the previous committee structure, where anyone can stand on any committee. Is that what they, you'd want?
Yes.
So it would be, you are proposing the removal of standing order forty-two, yeah. So, so Elaine has proposed that, so you then need a seconder. You then, you don't discuss it, it then puts it until the next meeting, when you discuss it and then you vote on it.
Sorry, Chairman, can I just comment again? That is not what is actually down here, is thirteen point two, which actually limits it to eight members.
Yes, that was, that was the original proposal, which.
I mean, we're, we're changing horses.
Even though it's on, even though it's on the agenda, that's there, because it's not gonna be voted on until the next, uh, full council. It's just slightly changed.
But it's, it is, it is different to, you would, I think, to be honest, that you, you would need, Michael is right in his comment there, that you need to, what you are actually asking for, rather than ending it from about eight members.
We'll put it this way, then, Sharon, okay, you have five of the Conservatives and you'll have an independent, a Labour and, um, the Citizens Movement on each of them. That makes it five, that makes it five, three, eight.
I think I'm right in saying, Chairman, but I'm open to correction. If we did go to eight members and we kept on proportional representation, two of those extra three places would actually go to Conservatives to maintain the equal proportional representation.
I, I understand where you're coming from, Mike. Um, how, however, I, I think where Elaine's coming from is that, um, we used to have, um, when it was a full conservative majority, there were eight members on, on the committee rather than seven. All right, it's actually, uh, it, let me finish please. If, it, it was been reduced to seven, um, and, uh, for, for whatever reason. Now, now, uh, um, as, as far as I'm con, I'm concerned, whether you've got it at eight members or whether you've got it at seven members, it is slightly relevant where you have this proportional representation, because if you have a majority, i.e. as we have been in the Conservatives, doesn't really matter, because you can invoke eight members as being all Conservatives, because we have the majority. So, so I don't think it makes a slightest bit of difference whether we've got eight or seven.
As it was previously, there was no limit on the number of people on committees. It was completely down to whoever was interested in going on a committee. And one of the reasons actually that this standing order forty-two was brought in was so that potentially what could have happened would be the ruling, not ruling, but the party that had the most members could actually have prevented anybody else going on the committee if they wanted to by not voting for them. As it is at the moment, it is guaranteed that people who aren't in the, the overarching. Well, it's not really a ruling, but the, you know, the, the majority party, um, that other people can be on the committees.
And that's the way we've opted, isn't it?
That's as it is at the moment, yes. Um. So I think I would, my, my comment, my thought, and this is just my personal thought, is, is if you did away with that standing order forty-two, potentially, there could be no minority, um, groups represented on any of the committees, because the, the.
Majority.
The majority of committee people could, uh, at the annual meeting in May could say, well, actually, no, we don't want anyone apart from the majority party on the committee. Which is a good disposition to give me as a leader.
Yeah. Well, we're gonna have a vote on this, so.
Oh, I don't think we have a vote today, do we?
So it needs to go back to Elaine, so do you want it, that it to stay on as it is? Or which is what your original idea was? Or to, in which case you can have a proposal and a seconder and then it will stand in abeyance until the next meeting? But if you want this, the, the, the addition taken out of standing order forty-two completely, then obviously that would then have to go back on to a next full council meeting as a completely separate agenda item?
Um, have it as, keep it as eight, so that, um, all parties will have a representation on all the committees?
Well, it wouldn't actu, actually, because I didn't work out the figures today. Um, as it stands at the moment, if you had, if there were eight on a committee, the, um, it would be that on a committee of eight, five point eight six six four people would be Conservatives and the other two would be from the other parties, which is the way, which is how it is at the moment.
Now, I want all parties to represent the committees.
Yeah, it, it, Elaine, uh, that's not quite as what this proposal is.
I think what Elaine is trying to say is it goes back to how it used to be. Whereas any of the fifteen councillors that sit on the council can go on the committee. Simple as that. Irrespective of whether they be independent, they be Conservative, they be whatever. It's just previously, it was always fifteen councillors, personal decision as which of those fifteen councillors wanted to be represented on which committees, and it always worked.
Uh, but again, as I say, the, the, the potential scenario is that when the councillors who are interested in going on a committee are voted on at the annual meeting in May, the majority party could, if they so wish to, which I hope they would never happen, could decide not to vote for any of the people who weren't in the majority party.
It's a great shame. It's a great shame that we thought it had to be changed.
Uh, you, you, you voted and elected, you represent the public. And people are not allowed to fully represent the public. Why can't it just go back to whoever wants to be part of a committee is part of a committee? Simple as that. It, it's not an issue from the Conservative point of view, because you still maintain a majority anyway.
I think that's what the problem is, is because they did get the full fifteen. It scared them, that, that, pulled them up, they thought, what happened?
Okay, so Chair, you want to move this on then, so?
Yeah, I, I, I think we have to move it on. I, I can understand where Andy's coming from, and Elaine, and even felt some respect.
Yeah, I thought he was one of us, yeah.
Rod, Roger, if you, if you don't.
Oh, Roger, stop it.
Uh, yeah, Andy and Elaine, if you don't mind. Um, I, I, I can understand where the people who are not Conservatives have, have a point. They have been elected by their constituencies, um, and, and they're, they're not able to represent their constituencies on any of the committees if we, as a majority, say, well, we, we, we're, we're going by the majority. So I can understand their point of view. However, um, the, the, um, uh, proposal was to amend the standing order forty-two to about eight members. Now, I think, um, if, if we wanna go along with that, we could go along with that, because as a, as a Conservative majority, um, none of them would actually ever get on to any of the committees.
I really word, I worded it wrong. I would, wrong, I mean.
Right, well, what I suggest then, perhaps.
Excuse me, if, Karen said, you may have worded it wrong, but that's what we've got in front of us.
It deflects it. Hold on a minute, Tony. Being dyslexic can be quite hard. So when I wrote that down, it was wrong. Should have expanded it a bit more.
Well, I, I can understand that, but what we have in front of us is a proposal. Um, and, and because that is as that is, 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 we either go along with it or we don't. Um, because that's what's there. Um, um, and, um, what I would suggest, we either move on or, or we make a proposal to this particular amendment. So, you know, is anybody, would like to propose this particular amendment?
I propose no further action, Chairman.
Well, you, you, you can't. It has to be, it's Elaine's proposal, so you can't vote on it.
She's saying it's not right.
Yes, that's what she's saying, not the right proposal. So you can't, that's what I'm saying. I was gonna say, yes, what I suggest is that this is, if Elaine wants to change the wording of the proposal, that will then go to September full council in a different format.
Be discussed at the October meetings?
Uh, November.
November.
Yeah, yeah. Make sense?
So, so first, if, if Elaine, if you'd like to say, look, I, I, I don't wanna go ahead with this proposal, move on and we'll get on to the next one, and then you can then, you go proposal, um, or put it in the, uh, agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
September full council.
Yeah.
Um, can we propose that? I'll propose it, and you write the second in.
I'll second it.
Elaine.
Yeah, Elaine, second it, and it, so, um.
No, you can't vote. You can't really vote. You just, we just leave it as it, as it is, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, so let's move on then. So the request for, uh, from, um, the Jimmy Creel Fun Fair to use Jubilee Green over the, um, August bank proposal.
Shall I, shall I talk you through this?
Yeah, go on, please.
So, um, Jimmy Creel's Fun Fair has requested that we, that he is allowed to use the Jubilee Green for his fun fair over the August bank holiday weekend. Um, so up to twenty eighth through thirty third of August. In light of the Covid nineteen pandemic, the fun fair will only be in a position to operate in line if HM Government, HFS, Leisham and Field give a go ahead and issue guidance, which they are expected to receive within the next week or so. Um, it's anticipated the fair will be very different to previous years and be on a much smaller scale. Um, so at the starting point, we have received his, um, the fun fair's risk assessment and their safety from work. Um, and then there would be more information, documents expected produced in due course. Um, so what councillors need to decide, firstly, whether you will permit the fun fair to use the Jubilee Green for the event, subject to running in line with the formal HM government guidance. And if so, how much the fair will be asked to pay. Uh, Jimmy Creel has indicated that he would be able to pay the same charge as previous years, which was six hundred pounds in two thousand and eighteen and five hundred pounds in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, councillors will then also need to decide whether the charge is made as a donation to the mayor's charity or directly to the town council. Um, bear in mind that the, the mayor's charity might be quite, um, thin on the ground this year. That's a good word.
Why then it was this, this, it was like last year? That's a question. It should be fair, isn't it?
Well, that's why, that's why I was saying, and that's why it was asked, it would come to a full council meeting rather than unless you, so councillors could make the decision.
That is beside the question, isn't it?
Yeah, it does change the year to year. Last year, it actually went to the council for, um, the council funds, but previously it went to the mayor's charity. Um, and then previously before that, it was to the carnival committee.
Yeah, that's why we have the, the, the.
Yeah.
Um, no, sorry, Elaine, you, did you say something?
Yeah, um, because of the cu, uh, like the Covid, uh, maybe just, just up under it, because.
Sorry, Keith?
Yeah, I, I think that, so due to the Covid, might, to produce it to, to.
Okay.
Well, it wasn't anyone extra. It was someone in the meeting, nobody else part of the, the, um, meeting department.
Anybody just laughing gas stuff or something?
If anybody else outside of this meeting, maybe members doing the public, I have to assure you, it's not my fault. Anyway, um, uh, my, my question is, um, particularly to Sharon in this particular in, instance, is that, um, they've gone from six hundred to four hundred, sorry, six hundred to five hundred in subsequent years. And can we not ask them for a little bit more as opposed to going down?
Uh, once at your sparring.
Yeah, originally, it was actually a thousand, although, but I think, I think when it, when it started, they paid a thousand pounds to the, to, to the carnival committee, and that went to actually organising the carnival. Then, when they did away with the carnival, um, the money came to the mayor's charity, with six hundred pounds actually being spent on, like, rainfall. And then four hundred pounds was used for, um, And then four hundred pounds was used for um social interactions, they had costume, people dressed up and that sort of thing. Um but as Jimmy said, there's no way that they'd be able to do that this year, even if they hang go ahead because of the restrictions. And then last year, council decided to just charge them five hundred pounds, um which equates to a hundred and twenty five pound per day, whereas in two thousand and eighteen it was a hundred and fifty pounds a day for four days. So, but again, it's down to you keep down to council to set charge, so. Ben, how's it sound practically?
Ben, open. Quite a bit controversial now. So I'm personally a little bit wary about staying ahead, considering that with um the things I cancelled and even today in mind of what's been advised and guidelines wise. And I'm just a little concerned as to what it would be viewed as publicly. Um and what local residents here, close to where it is going to be in traction, would feel, think and have a way of things and anything close like that with current climate situation handling it. Um I to one don't know, I wouldn't be happy if it were like at the bottom of my road or across my garden fence, which some of the neighbours near us are going to have to deal with. And then considering, you know, all this advice around social distancing, all that then, and how unsuccessful social distancing doesn't appear to happen in a supermarket aisle and things like that in relation to a massive people being here. I'm just a bit wary, and I'm more inside of, I'd rather didn't go ahead than it went ahead, regardless of whatever probably five hundred a day at a time, just because of the proximity to people residences and just making this place more of a place for the gay spot like that in the hot spot. And so I'm kind of, I feel like I'm too much inside of caution as well as trying to balance, you know, would I be happy with it, you know, if it was the end of my life, right, right? And I don't think I would be. Um I think I'd be in a situation, I think I'd actually, well, it was just given the next, considering how much weakness so far. And and considering how um targeted that type of the type of route and the the clientele would go to that type of event.
No, and from what, just just ju- just as a look at the other side, I yeah, I mean, that's my personal view is what you say as well, but um because I did ask Jimmy about that, he said it wouldn't be anywhere near, they can't they can't see that it would ever be, big rides with massive of youth people attending, you know what I mean, that sort of. They they are thinking more, but again, until they get guidance, they can't make any formal decision or give us a plan or a design of what they are looking, but what what they would envisage would be an area cordoned off with terrace fencing. People would pay to come in on the door and queue to come in, and you only have a certain number of people in at once. And it would be more the small, like teacup rides. People would buy tokens when they come in and then they would literally work their way round the ride, hand their token over, their charge goes on that ride, go to the next ride, hand their token over to the charter, do you see what I mean? That's how they're envisaging it, not a big, but yeah, it is a completely valid mind.
In my mind, it's like, if we're making a decision per day and there's no guidance and no guidelines, I'd rather just say, if anything, go ahead.
Yeah, and and the reason, it is too it is too early for it to come to a for council essentially to make a decision. But council said last year it had to come to a full council meeting or a decision. Um so that's why it's here tonight, even though it's not till the end of August, that makes sense?
Michael.
Michael, Michael, hand up.
I agree with Ben. Uh this is only seven weeks away. Uh who knows what the situation is going to be in seven weeks' time? We've seen in Leicester how sudden spikes have come up. We've had one not too far away from us at Oxford, Western Sydney. Um we can't control um groups of young people if they don't come into the actual fun fair, standing around outside and congregating. I think this is a disaster waiting to happen.
Yeah, and the opti can't be. Although we're just doing this when we council centre of other things. And as you say, the amount of time to keep that, yeah. You know, the lack of head of the people, right? I agree with Ben's mark.
Uh any other comments? Okay, no other comments. Um I I go along with Michael and Ben and Terry to some respect. Um however, they have put in a uh Covid nineteen um assessment uh to 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 the council. Now, not saying that we should effectively go ahead with it, but I think we should just put it in abeyance and see what the government guidelines are going to be in the next couple of weeks. And if we still can hold the the event for the guy to uh put up his 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 um smaller um uh fun fair. Now, I think we 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 ought to just look at it in 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 nearer the time. And we have the and we have the option to uh um terminate, you know, the the this particular event a- a- as uh our government guidelines will will be uh um to 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 that particular event.
Can I make the suggestion then that you delegate the decision to leisure youth and the relative to decide, and they will be eaten on the seventeenth of August?
That'll be soon.
Yeah, but but that's, Ben's got his hand up again, Ali Lane.
Ben.
Can I go first, Ben?
Ben. The government effectively has made some a hundred.
Yeah, government, yeah, the government has has opened all the fun fair. So we can't see the difference of having a fun fair here. If the government's allowed the fun fair, uh the Thorpe Park, uh Powers, uh and places like that, open, so what is the difference from that to having the fun fair here, if the the Covid nineteen act is in place?
That's what I'm trying to ask.
Um.
Well, no, they have said um they have said that they will have hand sanitizers on all the rides and that sort of thing, so they have, they are looking at it from a Covid nineteen point of view, they're not just saying, um not doing anything, because on a safety. From their insurance point of view, they have to, they will have to very much work within strict guidelines.
I I think that we should allow it to go ahead. The gov- like I've just, governments have allowed all the theme parks open. And I cannot see any difference between the theme park, well, obviously they're bigger, but they're a, why can't we have the fun fair here?
Thank you, Elaine. Can we just move on to Ben, what you'd like to say, Ben, you got your hand up?
Yeah, so basically, I would like to propose that based on the pre- chat debate we've had today, going to delegate decision down to the whole communities, I would want to say that today, we say we don't want to go ahead and run that, that'd be my proposal. And then considering our mayor's charities are going to be really hammered this year in terms of charitable donations from all public events that happen throughout the whole year. Ordinarily, we will be trying, depending on what all council would do, give some money to those mayor's charities, the money we would have raised from that fun fair being there, I don't know, five hundred, six hundred, three hundred, whatever people come with. Just say we um then, as a small summer side, to the mayor's charities. As it's very exceptional circumstances, and we find that somewhere in our budget, it's a stroke of something that can uh be be a charitable donation from within the council budget, so don't go ahead, you'll probably um fun fair, and then find just a small donation from the council to the mayor's charity fund. Um just in my the country, no, um festival, you haven't had any other events that have been out to run where charitable donations have been active. This can't run where charitable donations.
This wasn't the last.
And there might be something interesting with fireworks in the house, we just don't know.
Well, you you wouldn't have to make a decision on that, but I think that's a gender item, that's actually.
We have, we have seen Ben had. I mean, all charities are going to suffer that for the whole period, so it it's a completely exceptional circumstance.
I'll say, okay.
Can can we have a sort of proposal then?
Yeah, so Ben, Ben, I propose that based on the information currently available, we do not permit the fun fair to run
I'll do yours, it's free.
in August.
At at this committee, so um Andy?
I just think that so far, we've taken all of the advice on board that the government have given when it came to reopening the skate park. We waited until the government said it received to do so, we've then done that. Uh that apparently, within the next couple of weeks, guidance is coming through on things like fun fairs and that from, shown it, built up from central government as well. So at this stage, to just say no, then what's the difference between where we've taken guidance for reopening the skate park, for example, reopening our own playground areas, as to something like this, with guidance coming from central government?
Uh fair point, Andy.
There's obvious thoughts.
The only thing I noticed about that in comparison is I'm familiar with the skate park and play parks, all things that have a steady flow of people at a, but all throughout the time. This is this is an event that is, this is an event that's limited in timeframe for a few days. So you end up creating a a thing that attracts lots of people in very short space of time. And I just think it's very different, and I'm just thinking in terms of being a resident moving to this area, is that something I want living opposite, living opposite and anywhere near here, I don't think it is, I don't think I want people driving, uh lots of people walking here and 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 just contributing to that other.
Why not? The doors, and ask them. And wait, Ben, when you said about the skate park, every time I've walked past, there's been, they're not doing the two metres distancing.
No, I don't, I don't disagree, but even with the skate park, there isn't like an optic of like two hundred, three hundred people trying to go and use it all at once. It's a regular community, it's a smaller community, and the same with all that play parks and play parks, they're just only last week or so. Um.
My con- my concern personally, from a town council point of view, is that the fun fair will obviously be able to lease manage the people with inside their fencing, or however it would turn out to be. But who would be responsible for the potential massive of groups of young people who might gather outside the fencing? They wouldn't be within the fun fairs we make, but so who would the upper, the upper area? It's slightly different when the fun fair is on the whole field because it's, you know, and in the normal situation, if you get groups of young people turning up, well, they hang around the rides, but chances are, if it's within a very much secure area, it's much more difficult for, and the town councillors as officers and staff, we're not going to be able to go and say to people, we shouldn't be there, and that's too many, we're too close, and and we we genuinely have no idea, as Michael said, whether there's going to be spikes or whether we're being knocked down again, or, and I know that the fair wouldn't, won't run if if those sort of scenarios happen, but you just, you just don't know on the areas that are outside of the control of the fair.
I got those.
Yeah.
Okay, that that.
Yeah, and I was like.
Can we just move on?
So Ben proposed that based on the information currently available, we do not permit the fun fair to run in August.
So. Can I just add an amendment to that, if you don't mind, Ben? That um um if government guidelines change, then we need to rea- readdress this particular issue? Um rather than just poo poo it, um you know, because um we 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 are coming out of a lockdown, and yet it depends on a spike. Nobody knows at this moment in time, I haven't got a crystal ball, I don't think anybody else has. I'm just suggesting that we make amendment to your proposal, rather than just cancel it completely, to say, just, can we just um wait until we hear the government guidelines? That's my.
But then who will who will make that final decision? So then you need to, I'm saying that you need to delegate someone to make that decision as to when the government guidelines come out, and then Jimmy Crowell's fun fair come back with what they can do.
Then I should allow it, and then I should be purely go ahead to this present stage, or effectively buying a pill in a poke, because we don't know what is going to happen.
And also, there must be a cut up point that Jimmy needs to know.
Yes, well, I don't know, I mean, he's obviously desperate to do something, somewhere, somehow, because he's done nothing for months and months and months, so he's, you know, desperate to to do as much as.
He's a person, but otherwise the town council team, I mean, you know, that could be in the state, they could possibly become something, so that's.
Ben? Ben, what are you thinking, Ben, you don't know?
Thanks, and still direct, actually, man, to to abandon that proposal. What have we thought about it in terms of, at the moment, we've had the Covid nineteen where dealing matters when we weren't in a we weren't able to run council meetings and committee structures.
We had the action plan, which is Chair of Council and the Chair of Finance, yeah.
Yeah, so what if.
And the Town Park, yes.
And the Town Park. So what if we said it was cancelled for now? On the proviso that if the government advice comes out, and then through the action plan, we can agree as that group on the action plan, that it can't go ahead based on those guidelines have set out and what happened with what the the risk assessment out of that fun fair is telling us. And we kind of defer that, there's a reversal decision, if you like.
Yeah, I don't like this one, but because I'm actually with the lies.
I still think we should wait for the government guidance on this.
Well, that's that's what I'm saying, that you say, no for now, no for now, but if the government guidance says that you can, then the through the coronavirus action plan, the Chair of Council, Chair of Finance and Town Park could make, but I'm not sure I want to make that, I'm not sure I want to make this.
So you can't make a decision that, because we don't know what the government guidance will be in the next few weeks, so. Otherwise, I don't really.
That's that's why I would suggest that you delegate it to leisure youth, which is much closer. The seventeenth of August, which is much closer to the time, and if Jimmy is desperate to come, he will
Yeah.
he will wait till that time, that's that's. And by then, we might know a bit more on the state of the player of the country, and the government guidance will be out, and more restrictions might be lifted or more might be put in place.
Oh, as far as we've done against it then.
Exactly, that's what I'm going. So so let's 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 just move on from this, so that we can just like get this out of the way, because we'll be here all night.
Oh, Elaine, have your hand up, that?
No, it is, what we could do, yeah, Tom, sorry, Jack, what we could probably do is cancel for now, and soon as that guidance comes out, and Robin goes out for all councillors approving, depending on what it says on that, if they approve like fun fairs or whatever, around Robin, and then we can do it that way, instead of having to wait until the next meeting.
I don't, I don't think around Robin would work, because it it can get too too many people, it's I think you need to delegate it to somebody specific, you actually couldn't make that any council.
Channel A, if I could make a proposal, that we would defer this particular decision to the leisure youth and the meeting.
Yeah, I'll watch your justice.
On acceptance that we got uh guidance from the government, um how we're going to proceed with with the Covid nineteen.
Yeah.
Can I make that proposal, please?
Uh, I'll do it.
Hang on a minute, because we do have the proposal on the table, the original one, which.
I'm going to pull that.
Okay.
So I'll pull that.
Right, so, decision deferred.
Leisure means is. And and we've got the by the government on the Covid nineteen.
Yes, providing HM government guidance.
I approved it, Roger, you seconded it. So can we have a show of hands to live with this one? Uh, Michael? So that, um.
Mike, are you?
Sorry.
Are you in favour of that?
Yes, I'll go on more.
Right, so that's, uh, unanimous, I think, okay?
Perfect, let's move on. Um so the next item is um um the annual review of the Bragley State Town Council policies and procedures. I'm hoping that all of you have read these particular policies, as I have done this afternoon.
I ha- I have given you a spreadsheet on the front which shows you the changes that have been made to various forces and the. I ha- I have given you a spreadsheet on the front which shows you the changes that have been made to various forces and the CPTV policy. Ben's been involved, he's just, this change that he's put in, so, yeah.
And to save a lot of time, although if anybody wants to raise anything specifically about any of these particular items on, on, on this annual report, then please, you make, make yourself known. But I would suggest that the items thirteen, four, one to thirteen point four, twenty-four.
No, actually, that's my, sorry, it's thirty-two, thirty-three, it's thirty-four, yeah, sorry. My title there, and that, it's left.
Thirty-four, yeah, quite right, thirty-four. We take these as, we, we've all read them and we're in favour of them. Unless, unless anybody would like to make a bit of.
I don't think that's where it is. If you can hear me, can you hear me?
Little fit, Roger.
Let's just look at this appraisal form, like, like six pages on the back, five pages on the back. Doesn't seem to be much room on here.
Oh, there's loads of room, I, I just condensed it down because I'm trying to get the, the bits of paper down. Yeah, I should say to you, don't worry about page lines, size of fonts or anything like that, I've tried to squeeze it down to a smaller number of pages as possible.
Right, because comments, there's not a lot of these comments.
No, there's, the, the forms are electronic and they're completely expandable, so you can, yes, add in as much as you need.
And the other question I have is, going on to that page, working at home, twelve, I think twelve, five, six and seven, is everyone doing that when they're working at home, completing farming, recording records?
Um, that's a good question, I don't know on that one.
And have you, who, who knows what records, records are getting on?
Yes, I know exactly who's working at home and what they're doing, well, I don't know what they're doing because obviously I'm not a spy on the law, but. And they know that they are, nobody is political to do any more than their, um, a lot of hours. So nobody will be claiming perhaps extra hours. But I guess in. Well, that, I mean, I know that's a bit difficult, isn't it? Have you proposed, I think, Tom, Tom, did you second? Only was it you proposed or was it Roger proposed?
Roger proposed.
Can I?
You go.
Roger.
Sorry, Sharon, you know, earlier on when you said about me proposing Franklin for press officer?
Yes.
I proposed for him to be Deputy Mayor and then Tony came in and said that he spoke Franklin and he, he couldn't bear it.
Right, okay, so he knew that was something, he must have been what it would get to Mayor, okay, so, right, I will amend that if we're happy that it was not the first spokesperson, Mike, are you happy that you signed for it, it was Deputy Mayor, yeah, I'll change that. Okay, thank you, Amy. So we, can we, we, Tom seconded the proposal for all the parties, but was it Tony that proposed?
Lovely.
Lovely.
Yeah.
Thank you, Roger. So we're on thirteen point five, update on the coronavirus.
Sorry, can you just take a vote on that for the policy procedure?
Can we have a vote, please?
Yeah, that's unanimous, thank you.
Let's move on, thirteen point five, update on the coronavirus action plan, would you, Sharon?
Okay, sorry, just to pick up, Dave. Right, so, um, skate park has reopened and the risk assessment was done, circulated council is on the website. The tennis courts have reopened and being, are being used by tennis and people ball. And junior netball training is due this evening, the risk assessment was done for that, circulated on the website. Play areas have reopened, the risk assessment was done for that, circulated and on our website. The activity centres have reopened, the risk assessment and special hiring condition sheet has been done, circulated and on our website, we've sent all the documents to our insurance companies as well. For an active, the activity centre, it's obviously restricted bookings at the moment due to the type of activity currently permitted. Hire is all starting to return, but some groups and organisations not going to start back to its tech chamber. Critics returning at the weekend, all hires need to apply their own risk assessments, that's where we are now.
Thank you, Sharon, do we need to vote on that?
No, that's the current update.
So the next one is to confirm the dates of the forthcoming meetings as per your agenda pack. Do we need to go through that? I don't think so.
Not really, no, just to let, just to remind you, there's an extra full council meeting on the twenty-second of July at seven o'clock, that would be the final audit papers. And then planning and environment, next, all our eight, all our spoon, as full council finishes.
So I, I thank you all for your attendance, and any members of the general public who's sitting in the background camera, and, and thank you very much.
Hi, Tommy.